Good evening. Before our regularly scheduled council meeting, I am going to ask Chris Stettler to come up. Chris is going to have a public hearing on the CDBG application. Good evening, Chris.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to please sign in. And we need to submit a list of those who are present to do this thing. Thank you. As many of you may know, the borough has been involved in the Community Development Block Grant Program since the late 1970s. It's a long time. CEBG funds are federal funds that are provided to the borough through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the purpose of benefiting low and moderate income areas in a community or low and moderate income residents of a community. Conshohocken, the uses of CDBG money, there are a variety of them. Water and sewer line replacement or improvement, construction of affordable housing, rehabilitation of existing housing, construction or reconstruction of public facilities, public services that are either new or that can, or with the infusion of CDBG money, can increase the number of people receiving the services. Street improvements, removal of architectural barriers and economic development. All of these have various things that you have to do to show that they are eligible to receive the federal money. One of the biggest ones that we are required to mention at public hearings is displacement. Should a CDBG project involve the demolition or the demolition of affordable housing units or the conversion of affordable housing units to some other use? The borough would be required to replace those units on a one-for-one basis within the borough, housing to be in standard condition. The amount of housing has to be able to house the total number of people that were displaced. So you couldn't take a four-bedroom and then just make all one-bedrooms. The other caveat with this is that the replacement units have to remain affordable for 10 years. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to ask for public comments on community needs, how people think the CDBG funds should be spent, and you're also permitted to make comments on the past uses of CDBG funds. For 2022, the borough is eligible for $153,080. Our past uses of CDBG funds for the past several years have been community, have been housing rehabilitation, and in the past couple of years, we've worked on curb ramp projects, installation of curb ramps at various locations to create more accessible routes within the borough. So if anyone has any comments, questions, please ask them, please bring them up, be happy to try and answer them.
Chris, I do have a question. Do we still have a waiting list for people?
No, we have a very limited waiting list right now for housing rehabilitation. And it's really, let me get my note, because I wrote it down. We've also had a significant increase in the income eligibility. The limit for, a single individual is $59,050. And for a family of four, it's $84,300. So they've upped that because of housing in the area. But we do have a very limited waiting list. We are looking for applicants who might need their houses renovated, have code issues corrected, which is the primary purpose, to make things safer and better for people to live in their homes.
Right. I know, I know in my ward, the people that went through the process are very appreciative of having to do it.
We've done a few up there.
Yes.
We have a couple more coming up, too.
Yes, we have, we have a lot of seniors that, yes.
Yeah.
It really does benefit.
We are, we also have sufficient money to do this. We received an additional grant of $350,000 from the, from DCD, and we need to expend the money. We are finding that our costs have gone up significantly. We've had all the problems everyone else has had with the supply chain, with getting contractors to do the work. We've had houses that have required a lot more work than anyone would have ever thought. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Chris, can you talk a little bit about the affordable housing we have in Conshohocken currently?
Okay. Affordable housing that you have in Conshohocken right now is you have two projects, and please forgive me, because I always forget the number of units. There are Pleasant Valley Apartments, which are for households, they're for people with disabilities. They do have single individuals there. It's more designed back in the 70s and 80s for families, and that's 40 units. And then Marshall Lee Towers is, I'm not sure how many units. 60, 80, maybe. You end up with something like 140, it's not 100 units, but you, you end up with somewhere around there.
Right.
Which is not bad for a one-square-mile borough. Marshall Lee Towers was built under HUD's old, quote, "202" program.
Right.
For older adults and for people with disabilities. Those programs are kind of still around. There is also housing for, that can be mixed low-income housing with, with market-rate housing. You can also have over 55 and older housing, where one member of the household has to be 55 or older. There were some very odd things that were done in, in housing at the federal level because they didn't want to eliminate all of the senior housing. And a lot of the people, let even senior housing, didn't want a big mix of families and, you know, younger people or, you know, college kids or kids just running around. So there were some exceptions made in affordable housing for that. There are still a number of places that will help fund affordable housing. There is the tax credit program, which is run by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. CDBG funds and DCD funds, other DCD funds can be used to do houses up to four, up to four units in a building. Anything more than four units goes to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. So I still remember a little of that stuff.
I'm sorry. I still.
I still remember some of that stuff.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on how the funds should be used? Any comments on the past use of funds?
Chris, I, I think the way that you and the borough have directed the funds over the past years has been wonderful. It's benefited so many of our residents, and I am just grateful that you do the work.
Oh, thank you so much.
I know that it's a lot of work, so.
It's, it's quite interesting, and you get to meet a lot of the residents, and, you know, 99% of them are just absolutely wonderful, so.
Yes.
Just to tell you what the next timetable is on this, if someone goes home and all of a sudden a burning question pops up in your mind, we will accept written comments. We have to accept written comments for 10 days, but we are accepting comments through August the 17th. They can be addressed to me at Borough Hall, 400 Fayette Street. It's Chris Stettler. You can also email me at cstettler@conshohockenpa.gov. And if you want to talk to someone in person, you can give me a call at the borough number The rest of this process is you're going to have to put up with me one more time. There will be a second public hearing September the 21st at 7:00, again, before the council meeting. And that, purpose of that meeting will be to explain how we decided to use the CDBG funds and solicit comments on that. Council will be asked to pass a resolution authorizing the submission of the application in October, and the applications are due to DCD October the 28th. So you all know where I'm going to be for the next two months. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. I think you can close the hearing. You want to close the hearing now? Okay. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. The first item on our agenda this evening is under Land Use Matters, Public Hearings and Ordinances. The first item is consider granting conditional use approval for 9/11 Fayette Street. I will turn that over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. If we could go on the record for this matter, please. This is the scheduled date and time for the vote on the application of Jeffrey Gallo and Jefferson Avenue Insurance for the property located at 9/11 Fayette Street, tax parcel Council heard this matter on July 20th, 2022, and continued it to this evening for a vote. If you are inclined to approve the conditional use for an insurance office on the first floor of the existing building, the following conditions would be recommended. That use of the property be in substantial conformance with the application and the exhibits and testimony presented at the hearing. As presented at the hearing, the existing building shall be preserved, utilized, and maintained in a manner that is consistent with the existing Victorian slash early 20th century character of this section of Fayette Street, and that's a requirement of zoning ordinance Section 27-1204.2. As presented at the hearing, that the existing front yard shall be maintained as landscaped open space of the type traditionally found in the upper Fayette Street area with shade trees, foundation plantings, grass, et cetera, again, as required by zoning ordinance Section In addition to those two conditions under 27-1204, the use of the property shall otherwise comply with all other requirements of zoning ordinance Section 27-1204, which is the section that this relief is being granted pursuant to. And finally, use of the property shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. That is the, those are the recommended conditions if borough council is inclined to approve the conditional use application.
So if council is inclined, the motion is to grant conditional use approval for 9/11 Fayette Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mike, I'll send a notice tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Good evening, too. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on cable franchise renewal. Again, I will turn it over to Mr. Peters to open the hearing.
Thank you, President Leonard. If we could go on the record for this hearing, this is a public hearing of Borough Council regarding cable franchise renewal for the borough of Conshohocken. This hearing is held pursuant to Section 626 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth the process for franchise renewal. The borough's current franchise with Comcast is within the normal industry renewal window, and the borough is beginning the process of renewing the franchise. This public hearing is part of the preliminary portion of franchise renewal in which the borough reviews the cable operator's past performance and identifies the borough's future cable-related community needs. As such, as part of this public hearing, we invite comments from any citizens who wish to speak regarding either or both of the aforementioned subjects. Franchise renewal is the best opportunity for municipalities like the borough to assert their rights with respect to their cable operator and to obtain important benefits in return for granting the cable operator the right to use their public rights away. Those benefits include a state-of-the-art cable system now and in the future, strong customer service standards, free services to community facilities, better reporting requirements from the cable operators, maximize franchise fees, public educational and government PEG channels if desired, PEG capital support funding if desired, legal protections of the rights of way, and better mechanisms to enforce the franchise agreement. Those are a few of the benefits from the franchise renewal. This process will continue, but again, at this stage, the request is for any citizen comments with respect to the cable franchise renewal for Comcast. And we'll let the record reflect that there are no citizen comments with respect to this matter. This matter will be back before council at your August voting meeting for a vote. So with that, we can close the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is under Presentations. I would like to introduce Mr. Ray Sakalowski, Executive Director of Operations, is going to present a fiscal year 2023 capital, capital project plan for the B Field Playground renovation, Fritz Lodge Pocket Park, and Sand Tander Pocket Park. Hi, Ray.
Hello. So I'm going to do just a brief presentation on a park that's been there forever, the B Field, but it's been underutilized, and we're going to upgrade it. And then two other unique opportunities that came into play after we had our meeting about the Fayette Street corridor. And I think there, there are some unique ideas here, and I think everybody will be interested in what you say. So the first one is the B Field. The first one is the B Field. These are the items that are going to be put on, put up at the B Field. It's very similar to the other parks we've done. We want to keep them consistent, including the same, the same type of equipment, the same company, and the same port in place that's at the other parks. Those will be the age groups of the equipment that's going to be brought in. Unfortunately, there's not going to be anything hugely new like we had the, we had the, at some of the other parks, but this, this is definitely going to be an upgrade to what's Everything on this list was requests by either council people.
Thank you so much, Ray.
Council people, people in the neighborhood, people who utilize the park, and from things we've done in the past that have been very successful. All those things, I think this park is more along the lines of Mary Wood and how it's going to be structured. And it already has a pavilion, and again, that pavilion is underutilized at, at the B Field, and we hope that, you know, having, having a, these facilities there will, will increase the, the usage of that. So that's the current B Field, and you can see the equipment that's there. It's not only aged out, but it's also, there's, there's parts of it that we've removed because of some of the damage. And there's no reason to replace it at this point. It, it really is beyond repair, and you see the pavilion in the background. For the most part, all the trees, everything else, we're going to work around them with the park. We were able to do that at Mary Wood Park. And it helps, it helps in, we don't use 45-degree angles in parks. We try to roll the parks past the trees and, and use circular angles rather than square edges. That actually saves us money from port in place. The squared edges cost us more money than the actual circular radiuses. So that's what the basic look of that park will be. The, the two main pieces of equipment are the largest pieces of equipment there. The, what's called the volta is the actual merry-go-round. Merry-go-rounds are extremely popular here in Conshohocken. If you've ever tried to take one out, you would understand what I mean. And then, other than that, the, this is again, again, a rendering. So you're seeing a lot of squared edges. That's not what you're going to see in the park. When you're, when, when the park will be complete and we get our final numbers, you're going to see a rolling edge park going through some of the tree. The only trees I think we may have to deal with, but they're young enough, we may have to remove some of the trees we did on the Bear Root Project and move them to another location, but that won't, but the, the mature trees we're not going to touch at all. That's it. As far as that park goes, I mean, it's, it's not a very, not a very big undertaking for us. Maybe five years ago would have been, but this is really the end of the large park projects in the borough of Conshohocken. Everything else has been completed. The other two that we're going to talk about are what's referred to as pocket parks. That's been a conversation here, I know, for years, and different councils have talked about it, and this now is presented as some unique opportunities for us to come up with locations for the pocket parks. Any questions on this?
I do. Go ahead.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you go to the next page?
Can I go to the previous page?
The one after this one. We have another one. What is the white up above? Is that a path?
That's just a, this is a basic rendering, so a lot of times, they just, that, that might, that might be what they refer, that might be the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
At the, at the B Field, but, you know, that's the best he could do with the rendering.
So Ray, I, I do understand it's just a rendering, but that little piece over there, is that sand-icing? Is that, is that our diggers?
Yes, it is. Yes. So we searched long and, long and hard to make sure that we replaced those there.
They're the favorite.
People travel from different municipalities to use them, places like West Norton.
I know.
And Upper Marion, and, yeah, so it's a, we definitely, we found them, and they're a very popular thing.
They are always in use.
Just a little bit upgraded, that's all.
We're getting new ones. We're not reusing.
No. There is no piece of equipment that will be reutilized in this. This will be completely new. There will be some infrastructure work, and we really don't know, you know, it sits up on a hill, so we don't know exactly how expansive that will be, but I don't foresee it being any more difficult than any of the other ones we've ever done.
Is there any plan for fencing or enclosing the playground?
So we already started that with the ranch-type fencing, what we'll, around the B Field, and what we'll do for this is we'll enclose that with, they refer to it like chicken wire, a narrow wire fencing to prevent kids from going in between them. But that's the type of fencing we prefer to use now on every single park. We're also going to reach out to the, to the community garden, and eventually, that's what we would like to fence that in with, and just keep it consistent throughout the borough with, with all of them. So it will prevent, we're going to take some, take some measures, too, with traffic, how traffic goes through there, but that'll be all part of the park. But we do, we, we will fence it, not completely in, but we will fence it off.
Like on the hallway side.
And do you plan to change, like, lighting also for the area?
Lighting is definitely, will definitely be part of it. We already have lighting there. The B Field has lighting there for night football and rugby. So it's, it's not very expensive for us to do it. We'll probably add some additional poles. That you won't see in the rendering, that'll be done by our electrician.
Okay.
Separate from this.
And you'll follow the lighting standards throughout the borough for what times and what wattage and brightness?
It's all, yeah, it's all, it will be all, the lighting here can be controlled because we can point it away from the homes.
Right.
There's no, there's areas of the park that will not have, we can just light up that area and not have to go anywhere near the houses.
That's great. Anyone else have any questions for Ray on the, on the B Field?
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
So the next thing is the pocket parks. And I'll tell you, this is presented a unique opportunity for me. I've lived here all my life, and the Masons have always been a part of Conshohocken, but really didn't know much about them, and I had a unique opportunity through this to meet a lot of their members and to see what kind of membership they have. They've been great to work with, they have a lot of input, and they want to become more community-oriented. They're going to actually come here when we, when we finalize everything, we're going to have, Mr. Quinn, I do not want to say your title, I apologize, because I'll probably mess it up, but this is the guy who runs the show.
How are you?
So we're going to have them here to, to speak, but I think our, through our discussions, they wanted it to be a, not more of a member of the community, but actively shown as members of the community. I think through this pocket park situation, it opened up a lot of conversations that in the future will be very helpful for them and us in the borough. So this is what the current Fritz Lodge looks like. It's a very unique building, and I had the opportunity for the first time to go in when we had one of our meetings. And I think, again, it's an underutilized part of the borough of Conshohocken that I think will get a lot of attention if we make this plan work. So the conversation was that we wanted to, we wanted to move, and, and the conversation basically started with Julian Morales.
Right.
He brought it up at the Fayette Street meeting to see if we could get some type of pocket parks on Fayette Street. He brought up different locations down the shore where he was, and he thought it would be a unique opportunity here, and the problem was to try to find a place. And 24 hours later, we, we found the Fritz Lodge, and about two days later, we had a conversation with them about this, or set up a meeting about this. But it does, it, it, it's dead in the center of town. It is definitely an unutilized section of the borough of Conshohocken. It goes to the comprehensive plan, trying to move lower end of Fayette Street up to the upper end of Fayette Street, move the pedestrian traffic in that direction. And we actually had a meeting, myself and Stephanie had a meeting with Brian Fury, and he brought up something that you don't really realize until you're there at night. There really is nothing going on at that end of town.
Yeah.
After, let's say, 8:00.
And in the winter, it's 5:00.
It's literally dark. It's, there's nothing going on. So, you know, he brought that up, and we told him about this, and it seems to, it seems to work, and I, I think with, with their group and our group, we're going to, we're going to make it work. So that's what's there now. Here's what we're looking at potentially doing there. So from the top of the picture is Fayette Street. This is just, again, a rough sketch. We're going to, we'd put in a walking path throughout, again, a circular walking path throughout. We'd remove some of the trees there that are already dead. There's some large trees that are dead. We would put benches in, have areas that you could walk your dog through. And we're in the discussions, we haven't finalized them, but the, the Lodge has also offered up the patio portion of their building, which would then open up some even more unique, unique opportunities. And we would redo their parking lot. Again, lighting, paint, signage, landscaping, turn it into a legitimate park where people will want to spend some time there, and actually maybe a walk-up there as a location to spend some time. The other part of this is it's really in the middle of things like the Soapbox Derby, the car show, the Mayor's Car Show. It's right in the, and I think the, sponsoring the Mayor's Car Show or you're part of the Mayor's Car Show. So it really, and it's right next to the firehouse, too.
Right.
So we have, we have a lot of things going on there event-wise, but we don't really have a location for a lot of people to, to go to. So this, this is the general plan. Looked at it probably now 100 times, and I don't see why we couldn't do everything that's on here. We've entered into the conversations with them, and I think we're talking about a 20-year commitment from the Fritz Lodge to the borough as far as the property goes, and the borough would maintain the property and obviously keep it up like the rest of our parks. So this is more of a ground view for, for what it would look like from the corner of 8th and Fayette, looking at the building. And again, you don't get, you know, you don't get the big picture here.
Right.
But until you're standing there and see what could be, it does offer a unique experience. If you think about how properties catty-cornered to this, and they light it up at night with, you know, they have lights throughout the, throughout the building, and, you know, we're talking about doing a lot of lights here, and we're also talking about putting in a sign. Our sign out front, relatively small, something that we could utilize along with the Lodge to advertise community events, and they could advertise their events.
Sure.
And right now, so far, we really have had, tell me if I'm wrong, I've had no negative feedback at all. It seemed to have gone real well. They were good enough to come here with 15 or 20 of their members to have a meeting where we discussed this whole project, so.
Wonderful. I think it's really going to not only be such a great thing for the residents, but also it enhances the beauty of that building that people don't even notice now, and it will just stand out also. I, I think for everyone involved, it's just, it's a great opportunity for all of us, for the residents.
It is. It's a very unique building on the outside and on the inside. But, you know, unfortunately, it's, there's a lot of tree coverage there.
Right.
You know, we, we have people that can take care of that landscaping-wise, make sure that you not only see the, the building, but we have a legitimate place for people to go.
I, I think it's also going to help with the walkability for the businesses, like across the street, like it will be great for Feen when the weather's nice. People can go in and get their coffee across the street and relax and enjoy it, and even the restaurant, people can go over afterwards and enjoy. can go over afterwards and enjoy it, or sit there while they're waiting to go to the restaurant.
I think that's consistent with the conversation we had with, uh,
Right.
Mr. Pieri.
Right.
We've, you know, it, the restaurant owners all talk to each other.
Right.
The restaurant owners up there, and, and everybody in that area know this, this is what we've been talking about.
Right.
And, um, uh, you know, you talk to them on the street, you, you find out that this, we're getting nothing but good feedback with this.
It's great, I think.
Again, I think it opened up a unique opportunity, and the fact that the Lodge was so, um, so good about having this conversation and discussion, uh, it really made things a lot easier.
Right. I think just that pocket park is really going to change the whole look of those upper avenues, that in itself.
So, right now, we're in the, we're finalizing it, we have an agreement based on principle, I would say, uh, we're finalizing the, the documents, um, and once that's done, like I said, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna ask some of their membership to come here and, and speak to council. Any questions on this?
I have a question about the building. Was it built to be a lodge for the Masons? Did the Masons build?
It was built.
That's exciting in itself.
My name's Glenn Quinn, I'm the Worshipful Master of the Fritz Lodge.
That's it.
Uh, the building was built in 1930-ish, and it was designed to be a lodge building. As a matter of fact, we showed Ray when he was down the original hand drawing, architectural drawings of the original building.
That's wonderful.
So, it was made to be a lodge only.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you ever do tours of that though?
Yes, as a matter of fact, um, one of the things we talked about, Ray, was we just recently, this year, we had Martha Washington come out and was open to the community.
Mm-hmm.
So, we had people, uh, men, women, children coming in to see our lodge for the first time.
Right.
We've also had, uh, recently, the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department came out and did a K-9 demonstration. In November, we're also doing, in conjunction with the Montgomery County Veterans Association and their plan with, um, the VFW, we're doing an open presentation again.
That's wonderful.
And we're having people come into the lodge and tour the lodge, and we also have on our current sign out there, and we publish a lot on Facebook, that we're having fellowship nights every Tuesday. Come on up, look at the lodge, find out what we do, um, tour the lodge, um, you know, there's that, that mystery about Freemasonry, we're trying to break that down.
It's very intriguing, I will say, yes. And, and like Ray, I, I have to say, I've lived here all my life, I've never seen the inside of that building, so I, I will come up and do a tour and, and be excited about it.
Cool, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions about this one? All right, so the other opportunity, uh, was actually presented by Mr. Morales, so he, uh, not only came up with the idea, but he stepped up with a location also. So, this is the Methodist Church on Sixth Avenue, uh, between the bank and the Methodist Church, is a relatively small lot, um, that's being utilized sometimes by the church for some of their events, uh, but, uh, again, we saw an, an opportunity at that location, that being the dead center of town, Sixth and Fayette, Fayette Street. Mr. Morales' building is a catty-cornered to this, and it's meticulously landscaped, and, uh, you know, he, he keeps his properties, uh, very well capped, and, uh, this was something that he thought we could utilize in order to put a pocket park. So, we actually had a, uh, rendering of this made too, um, that is the overhead concept. This one is a lot easier to identify or look at through that concept. So, that's what you would see walking south on Fayette Street. You would, uh, there's some small trees, now, again, this is a concept drawing, so this might get shifted in some directions, there's already been, there's already been conversations about that, and, uh, and again, Mr. Morales has been very open to those conversations. We had a meeting with Anita and people from the church, uh, and, uh, they went, they went well, and we had some onsite meetings for this. But this gives you a, a better idea on what the, uh, what it would eventually look like if we stayed with this similar concept. The stone, the, uh, the gentleman from Gilmore who, who made this rendering, uh, came up with the stone idea because it matches the church a little bit, so that the face of, the face of the stone for the benches, it really, if you think about what that location is, there's a lot missing there. You know, there's the CVS and the 7-Eleven and places like that, we're going to have conversations with all of them about, um, this is what we would like to see moving forward, um, and we would use this as an example. This on the Sixth Avenue end, and definitely the Fritz Lodge going forward. Any questions on this?
I think it looks.
And again, these would, we would enter into maintenance agreements with them, formal paperwork, uh, Mr. Morales' property is in a trust, so, uh, 10 years would be the term for Mr. Morales' property and a discussion after that. But, you know, 10 and 20 years, 20 years on both of these would be great.
Right, and 10 years on this one, the, I, I, from what I'm seeing, the investment from the borough in this one is less than?
Substantially.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be substantially, um, the, um, the pavers and depending on what type of benches, and that's really our main, there's some, there's some, uh, there's some, uh, leveling work that has to be done there, it has a slight grade.
Right.
But, it's nothing major. Uh, the, this park totally would take somewhere in the two-week period, once we decided to, to do it.
Right.
Um, the, the Mason Park, um, that would be a bigger project, and I think, um, as we start looking at that, that would give us the idea on the next steps to go.
Right.
And I think, uh, I just think that that park in particular would, we'd have a lot, a, a, a lot to do there for a long, we'd have a better investment for a 20-year period of time.
Right, right.
In my opinion, I think we would be better off investing a good amount on that, getting it done early, and getting it to the point where it's easily maintained.
Right.
Uh, and, um, and go from there.
Just great. Julian has the liability for that park, Ray?
For this? The liabilities will all, all be shifted to the Borough of Concha Hocken.
Okay.
Yeah, it would go on our blanket policy, lack of a better term.
Add it on the property list.
Is the sloping lawn area considered part of the park?
The slope in the back?
Yeah.
So, it is part of it, but we're not going to do anything there. That will be, it will be cut off there. So, there will be a slope, but it will be, um, probably, well, if you look at the rendering there, he's put some bushes around there to, um, prevent people from.
I see.
But that would be the idea. We don't want to touch the slope, the slope would then, we'd have to get into things like retaining walls. At that height, you're talking about a pretty good expense.
I guess I'm trying to understand, would the public be allowed into that additional sloping area, or is the plan to actually put bushes to reduce their traffic back there?
Well, there, there's not gonna, access wouldn't be denied. There is a section, there is a section, um, of that property that the church has an easement to their church, but that's a, a concrete walkway, so we wouldn't block that or obstruct that in any way, but the back part of it, yes, it would be open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. Take care.
Thank you very much. Great job. Next item on the agenda is manager matters, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Treco.
Thank you, President Leonard. The Borough of Concha Hocken has been discussing with our business and commercial district members a shuttle system as it pertains to, again, the Main Street overlay and the continuity of commercial entities from the riverfront all the way through the upper ends of Concha Hocken. We have been lucky enough to have entered into some strategic public-private partnerships as it pertains to public parking, so we have acquired over the last five years, um, which are now available and open to the public, significant public parking spaces at different hours of the day. So, we're shifting our gears, our, our attention now to how do we utilize those parking spaces, um, and how do we really drive commercial activity up through our Main Street to the upper avenues. We are proposing that we enter into a partnership with GVF, um, which is a transportation management association. It's actually a nonprofit. Um, it was created to advocate and promote a viable transportation network for our region's economic vitality, um, with really the goal of reducing single occupancy vehicles and promoting alternatives like a transit or a shuttle system. So, we have had GVF in, um, specifically to discuss the proposal for implementing a shuttle system, and what we are, what is in front of you this evening, not for a vote, but just for discussion, and it'll be back on your agenda in two weeks for a potential consideration for a vote, is a phased rollout. So, the first phase would be a survey, um, that would get generated through GVF and Borough Administration. That survey's sole intent would be to gauge interest from our community, um, to determine what the interest level is, but also desired drop-off and pick-up locations, and how that shuttle would function best to service the needs of the community. Um, it's also important to note that the shuttle would, um, go down to the New Septa Station, a New Septa parking garage, um, so lots of, um, alternative modes of transportation is kind of what our goal is here, which a lot of the developments have been approved, predicated on. Um, so again, phase one would be a survey, um, the survey results, um, would be compiled, um, and they would be utilized to develop an RFP that would go out specifically requesting responses to entities that would provide shuttle services to the borough. Um, so again, phase one is the survey, the development of the survey, the release of the survey through Borough social media avenues, um, utilizing Survey Monkey, so very simple to use, um, pushed out to the community. If a community member does not have access to the internet, we would have an option where they would be able to call or walk into the borough, and we would actually complete the survey for them. From that, we would compile suggested marketing, compiling of the results, and then the findings and drafting the RFP, so that would be phase one. And then phase two would actually be the issuance of the RFP, um, so it would be the drafting of the RFP that would go out, um, that would include everything like potential shuttle routes, hours of operation, insurance requirements, estimated costs, um, and again, suggested routes based off of the feedback, um, and then, um, the, the, the RFP submissions would be reviewed, um, and reputable shuttle vendors would be recommended through a presentation to council and the public based off of the, um, answers and responses to the RFP. So, that is, in a nutshell, what, um, a lot of conversations have, um, occurred over the last couple of months. Um, I can tell you that we have had conversations with businesses along Fayette Street, they are very interested in this shuttle concept. Um, we will be gearing the survey, if approved, to that commercial district and the businesses along Fayette Street, but it's not solely for Fayette Street. We also would be, um, making sure that the route and the stops were hitting all aspects of the borough, um, potentially also pushing out to neighboring municipalities in the future, if it was successful, um, with the goal here, basically, you park your car at your house, and then you can get anywhere in the Borough of Concha Hocken, um, either by walking, biking, or the shuttle. It would be at their disposal.
Steph, what makes this shuttle different than a shuttle that we had before in Concha Hocken?
Um, we have what's called Transnet now, so a couple different, not just an easy answer. So, we have Transnet now, and that is focused mostly to senior citizens, um, who apply through the borough, um, they utilize the services of that shuttle, um, a lot of people refer to that as a shuttle, but it's really not. It's a mode of transportation for specific reasons that is really there to assist, um, our senior citizens in getting where they need to get to. The borough then reimburses them for that process, so that's one thing that currently exists and has existed for a while. The shuttle, I think was like 20 years ago that existed.
Easy.
It might even be longer than that.
Right.
Um, I think that that was not as large of a scope in terms of how we're looking at this, and additionally, you don't have the other amenities that exist now that didn't exist then.
Right.
You have your development along the river, you have an increase of residents that are coming in, that we know we're expecting over the course of the next 24 months. Have a new state-of-the-art train station, we're going to have a new state-of-the-art parking garage that's servicing that train station. Um, you have three public-private partnerships with corporations that provides thousands of parking spaces that weren't available or at your disposal that now are. So, those are all strategic concerted decisions that this Borough Council have made over the course of the last couple of years, um, and now it's at your disposal, and you have businesses and new businesses that are looking to come in and be a part of Concha Hocken, um, and it's just an amenity that, that we really should be taking advantage of. So, yes, there was a shuttle before, no, I don't believe that it was a shuttle that was, um, thought through to the extent that this concept is. We've seen GVF's shuttle management that exists right now in Upper Marion, and how that serves their community with their amenities, so different in scope and different in kind of purpose, but still a very successful model of what can work in a community. We would definitely be bringing this in, but definitely putting a Concha Hocken flair to it, um, because we're, we are much different than Upper Marion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Does anyone else have any questions for Stephanie?
So, I, I will say that there, of course, is a cost to the proposal, so it is $15,000. It is $7,500 at the start of the contract, and then the remaining 7,500 would be submitted at, once the final recommendations are developed in there, and GVF's partnership at that point is done. Um, the exciting part about GVF is that they also have an actual management component to this, because they are a transportation management company, that they can help us through this initial phase, but part of what is attractive about them, like it is in Upper Marion, is that they actually have a management component to their company. Um, so, if we're really looking for it to be something that's Concha Hocken-based, something that we can sink our teeth into, potentially down the future, it comes in-house, but right now, as it's getting started, um, and they have all types of, um, interesting analytics that go along with ridership and mobile apps, and, um, it's just an exciting opportunity. And understand that the, this, the, the costs for the shuttle proposal, um, much like a lot of the park presentation you saw this evening, um, we're in the fortunate position that, um, there are development costs to the borough that will cover a lot of these costs, so it's not coming out of the resident's pocket.
So, we're not using one of our capital line items for this project?
We.
There's another funding source that we currently have?
That's correct.
It is not a resident-funded?
It's not a resident tax dollar-based funded.
That's great.
Thanks. Um, so again, this is not on for a vote this evening, it is on for discussion, and then if anyone has any further questions over the course of the next two weeks prior to being on your agenda again, um, we would welcome that feedback, and we can also funnel them over to GVF if there's anything GVF-specific. Um, and we will be, as we're developing the marketing materials for the survey, also highlighting GVF and, um, the work that they've done for multiple municipalities in Montgomery County and other counties across southeastern Pennsylvania.
Are they the biggest kind of?
They are, and they've won national awards in terms of their transportation management modes. I think the thing that's unique about GVF is that they are a nonprofit, so there is...
That's great.
Yeah, even if you're, if you're looking at kind of how their management structure and the way that they're set up, municipalities are buying into a nonprofit entity that really is looking at, um, these alternative modes of transportation and how that benefits the communities that they serve.
Which is different from other management companies that you were looking at?
It's just different from looking at like a profit, a for-profit entity.
Right.
Um, so regardless of, um, you know, how they're structured, or who is part of that management, at the end of the day, in my opinion, working with a nonprofit, um... at the end of the day, in my opinion, working with a nonprofit, at the end, assists, is benefit to our community, yeah.
It is, it's a benefit to everyone.
Yep.
How long is this survey process?
According to our conversations with Maureen, it's, it will be this, this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Early fall. Once, of course, once they get the green light to go, if they do.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Stephanie? Thank you, Steph, it was a, a great presentation. Thank you. And I, again, am going to hand it over to you for consider approving zoning escrow releases.
So just administrative item in terms of closing out these zoning accounts. So 116 West Second Avenue, they have an escrow release of twenty-four dollars and four cents. I'm going to read each one of this, and then just ask for a motion on all of them. 509 Spring Mill Avenue for twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, 1023 Fayette Street for one thousand sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents, 800 Spring Mill Avenue for two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents, 911 Fayette Street for five hundred and forty dollars and forty-seven cents, 101 Washington Street for nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, 434 West Elm Street for seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, and 125 East Elm Street for six hundred and three dollars and fifty-seven cents. If inclined, the motion would be to release the total amount of the zoning escrows in the amount of four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Good, okay.
Go ahead.
Antoinette on the Friends of Conshohocken Parks had purchased sneaker collection bins, so the Friends of Conshohocken Parks was doing a shoe drive fundraiser, which was called Got Sneakers, and those bins were placed around the borough for collection of shoes for this fundraiser. Those bins were at the cost of seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents. She has submitted a receipt for reimbursement, and so in front of you this evening is a motion to consider approving that reimbursement request.
So the, the motion for council is to approve a reimbursement request to Antoinette Coop for the Friends of Conshohocken Parks in the amount of seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie. The last item this evening is under legal matters. The first item is consider approving Resolution 2022-20, amending land development approval for 212 Wood Street, and I will turn that over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. In, so back in 2016, a land development was approved for sixteen townhomes at 212 Wood, and at that time, it was a decision to be Phase One, was constructing the townhomes, and then Phase Two was a connection to Second Avenue Meadow through a bridge, and then a pedestrian pathway that, that made its way down to the Meadow. Townhomes obviously are constructed, they're there. During the process of designing the bridge and the pathway, by that point, the development had, had been turned over to the HOA. Under the HOA's documents, not surprisingly, they're responsible for the pedestrian pathway and the pedestrian bridge. They informed the borough, they being the HOA, that they did not desire to be responsible for the bridge or the pathway and the ongoing maintenance of, of the bridge and the pathway. The only reason it was there was to serve them, so to the extent they were no longer interested in that responsibility, the discussion with them turned to, okay, if you amend your documents to remove that, your HOA documents, the borough will consider relinquishing the requirement of a Phase Two. They, they have done that, they've removed the pathway and the bridge from their HOA documents through certain amendments. They've also obtained the unanimous consent of everyone that lives there to the removal of the pathway and the bridge, and as such, you're now left with a Phase Two that the benefactors of Phase Two no longer want. Phase Two was designed to be the improvements associated with the Phase One park-and-rec fee, which you guys require for every development. That park-and-rec fee was sixty-four thousand dollars, and the developer was going to get a credit for the work he did on the bridge and pathway. The resolution that's before you honors the wishes of the HOA. By removing that Phase Two, it requires the developer to instead pay the sixty-four thousand dollars, and I understand the developer has actually already paid that sixty-four thousand dollars. So, the resolution that's, that's before you tonight removes Phase Two, accepts the sixty-four thousand dollars, and finally closes out a land development from 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
So the motion for council is to approve Resolution 2022-20, amending land development approval for 212 Wood Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is council member and mayor matters. Mayor Aronson is not here this evening. I do have those mayor matters, and I will present them for the mayor this evening. The first item under mayor matters is Conshohocken Night at the Reading Phil's. Mayor Aronson wants to remind all residents that this Sunday is Conshohocken Night at the Reading Phil's. The game starts at 5:15 PM. You will have a booth at the front gate giving out free tickets and tickets, and also be picked up at businesses all around the Conshohocken Borough. Last year, Conshohocken Night was the Phil's most popular night of the year, and we hope this year will be even bigger. Also, for the mayor's announcement, is the ice cream battle. So Mayor Aronson would like you all to, all, to invite all the residents to Scoops on August 28th at 5:15 for the ice cream battle. The mayors of Conshohocken, Bridgeport, and West Conshohocken, and the president of Norristown Council will all be highlighting their favorite local ice cream shops, so please come out and support our favorite place, Scoops. Thank you. Ms., Stacy, do you have any comments?
No, nothing tonight, thank you.
I don't have anything either, thank you.
Kathleen?
Nothing.
Tina? And I already did mine for the mayor, and is there anyone for public comment this evening? Oh, and also, before we do public comment, Chief Metz, do you have anything this evening?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Anyone for public comment? Can come up to the mic and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Richard Coase, South East Conshohocken Street. Just one recommendation, for what it's worth, for the pocket parks. My solid designs, they look really good, but I was thinking, it might be nice to have like a public water fountain or something there, so people, like on hot days, they can, you know, just get some water, or maybe something more ornate, like a, like a waterfall or something there, but I think water would be very good addition to that, especially the outdoor public water fountain, so, that's it, just wanted to make that suggestion.
Thank you. Thanks, good idea. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Okay, meeting adjourned.